County Board of County Commissioners. We welcome all of you here. I wish this could be this way every meeting, but I know I can't be, we can't be that fortunate. But at this time, I'd like for our DAS to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Bridget Dory. I'm the Communications Manager running the public Zoom.
Hi, I'm Leslie Hervey, clerk to the board.
Good evening, I'm Alicia Reese, County Commissioner, Vice President of the Board.
Good evening, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Thank you all so much. Stephanie Summer Dumis, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We have some very interesting items on the agenda this evening and we will get started. Our first item, as it always is, is silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So if you could please take a moment for a silent prayer and then we will stand up for the pledge. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? I don't have any cards. No? Okay. Alrighty. You forgot your card?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, come on.
I was excited.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I got all the beautiful women up here. Um, this is gonna be real quick. I'm normally talking about indigenous people because of a project that we're working on. Something just came up, which I didn't know. The restaurants haven't been pulled out of it. Pandemic. They're still hurting and they're definitely hurting for bodies. Years ago, I produced a show called Dining Entertainment. And what it did was it introduced the public to the restaurants in the city. Some of you probably sitting up here probably remember the show. It was called Dining Entertainment. This show I put on, it was close to almost 20 years ago. And now, by popular demand, they would like to see it again. One of them is Jason Dunn. I know everybody knows Jason Dunn. He said that show was ahead of his time. And what I want to do is, people are always coming down here asking for money, but it don't put money back into the system. The program that we're gonna put together, me and my VP, is gonna put money back in the system. In other words, is we gonna entice people to go out to eat? I come, I graduated out of the top chef school in the country, the Culinary Institute of State, New York. And what I'm gonna do is, we're gonna institute an apprenticeship program. All these cooking schools around here, they're gonna have apprenticeship programs. So once they come out of the schools, they're gonna go right into these kitchens. So they won't have a hard time trying to get their bodies. And I'm gonna need your help to help put all this together. I think it's a great program. I think it's gonna help the community and it's gonna put money back in the system. And that's what we need more of. We need, people always asking for money, but it don't put it back in the system. And the last thing is, we definitely got to go after and find out the true history of the people that live in this city. We sitting on a gold mine for tourism. That could put a lot of money back in the city because of the Masons who were Indians. They were Indians. But we, we don't even know that. Seven Hills, all this information down here, people will come in droves to the city to find out how incredible this city really is. Thank you for your support.
Well, thank you, thank you for your comments. And the apprenticeship program that you mentioned, certainly you want to put that in writing because apprenticeship is always great for, for young people, old people. So you work on that proposal for sure.
Alright, I will.
Okay, thank you. So we have a couple cards here. Heather Britton. I don't know why I'm squinting and the glasses are right here. Heather Britton, no? Okay. Well, we. Oh yeah, we're gonna have to probably move forward. Yeah. Aki, you want me to fill in at the end or? You, would you like for me to fill in at the end? Okay, okay. So you are Heather?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good evening.
We are part of the Evanston Community Group. We've been here before talking about housing and in need of funding. The American Rescue Plan Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act was signed by the Biden Administration, March the 11th, 2021, for $350 billion. $195 billion is used for the Recovery Fund. Within those billions, there's a housing section. $21.55 billion for emergency rental assistance, $10 billion for struggling homeowners, and $100 million for housing counseling. We've been here before in regards to the Evanston community and the infrastructure needs as homeowners. And so we're back again to have another conversation about what our community needs. And we understand that for Hamilton County alone, for the state of Ohio, it was over $5 billion that was given. For the Cincinnati alone, it was $279 million. For Hamilton County alone, it was $158 million. For a total of $11 billion. We're asking, where is the money in regards to the infrastructure grants that we have spoken to you guys about before? And we understand that the Dumis Office was supposed to have an assistant to help us in better understanding what we could do to apply for these grants or to at least locate the funding. And so we're asking you for help. Because in this demonstration that I have, and I'll make sure you get a copy, there is zero allotment for infrastructure. And we have a problem with that because we're trying to figure out where is the money.
Thank you. We have distributed millions of dollars for infrastructure. Now Evanston community, specifically, I, I don't, we did not do an allotment that I can remember for Evanston, but the neighborhood, you have a neighborhood council, correct?
Yes.
Okay. They need to put it, I mean, the comments are great and understood and I, and I understand Evanston is doing some building and, and projects, but I would say put it in writing what your requests are in specific, the council specifically. Say what areas you're interested in and how much you think it would cost. And, and so I appreciate you coming down this evening, making comments. But if you could put it in writing, I, I know I heard you say earlier about my office was supposed, supposed to be directing you to something. I don't remember anything in writing about that, but.
Yes, we were here last time and there was a gentleman that was sitting on this end and you were saying you were gonna use him as our contact to actually figure out what information your office needs in order to move this process along and make decisions. And there's been plenty put in writing through the COFA organization, which is Community United for Action. So we're part of that group, but we're asking specifically for our community because we are homeowners and we don't want to be homeless due to the infrastructure and the problems with the plumbing, sewer backup, basement backs up, and gas issues. So we know that the commissioners know about this already because we've been down here before.
And we've distributed affordable housing over 40 million. We have a mortgage relief program. We've done a rollback on, on taxes, lots of things. But we can have someone contact you. I don't think necessarily it would be my office because we have specific staff that are working on allocation of all that money that you talked about. So we have your number.
Yes.
And so we will be getting in touch with you, the administrative staff, okay?
I hope so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jean Hall? Okay, okay, thank you. Good evening.
Here in the morning times.
That's okay.
Yeah. Alright. Once again, I was here on 4/21. You asked me to come back with some good news. I'm coming back to tell you that there was no good news for our neighborhood. Our houses are sliding extremely faster now. Karen Ball did come out and took a tour of our land. She informed us that there are broken pipes underground, which we have had. Two of the broken pipes fixed. Our yards have not been refurbished, no, neither have anybody's land. We are, were asked to get a plumber to rule us out of the situation on what's going on on here, Crescent. However, we, we contribute our funds of $500 to get an engineer, geotechnical engineer out to tell us what's going on. At the same time, this is now terrorizing myself, my family. My grandbaby is traumatized. She seen a tree fall in our backyard the other day. She comes every weekend, the following week, she comes waking up screaming, Mama Jean, Mama Jean, there's a tree about to fall on the house, we gotta get out. So with all the effort that the city has to do this high-impact work that only takes a little effort, no one's talking to us. When they hear my name, they close the door, they, um, our office closed, no return phone call. I signed up for the SBU program. The SBU program turned me away because MSD always want to say they're not part of what has happened in our backyard with this mudslide due to all the broken pipes. We don't know where to go. You told me last time we was here, 4/21, you would appoint someone to help us. No one has helped us, no nothing. And now we don't know, if we wake up tomorrow, are we gonna be down here with our homes?
Well, Karen Ball is our liaison for, for MSD. I don't know what the status, do you know the status, Jeff?
She advised us to pay more money out of our pockets after we'd have paid $500. And financially, I just don't have it like that and.
We real, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is a city issue that's occurring on our property. However, they had no problems coming to fix all the manholes in our backyards outside our property line, which is Hyde Park. We do not live in Hyde Park. We don't live in Mount Adams and we don't live on Columbia Parkway. But every time they had a mudslide, actions was taken immediately, you know? And now today, my niece fell in a sinkhole several houses down from where I live at, where there was a busted pipe, another, the third busted pipe. And MSD came out, they said, this is our problem. This has been four months ago. There's a big old hole that sits in front of my sister's house. So because of, I'm gonna say, less fortunate people is what they probably want to consider us as. They treat us like we're nothing. Because if this was downtown, anywhere else, a sinkhole, a mudslide would have gotten taken care of immediately. Commissioner, please, we need you all's help. Our homes are affordable for us to live in. I cannot afford to go live somewhere else. So we asked for some infrastructure money to be taken care of this because you only have the means. We just here to tell you what's going on. So if that is enough said, we need your help really bad, really bad.
And, and I, I know you do. And your frustration is our frustration. MSD is a frustration of ours. We talk about SBU sewer backup program and how it doesn't include enough people. And we were talking about, how are we going to include more people? Because the criteria is so rigid. Your specific situation, I'm not aware of what's going on with that. But MSD is, is so big, it's such a major millions of dollars issue and we're trying to tackle it, but the antiquated pipes all over the county, that's, it doesn't help you. But I understand, we, we are frustrated too about how do we help these individuals that come here and their basement is flooded, but they don't qualify. So we have to, we, and we're trying to figure out how, but we're going by the standard, a revised code and the standard of what we have to go by for criteria, but we're trying to change the criteria.
Thank you.
Doesn't help you right now. But we, I can, I'm not speaking for all of us, but I think I can. MSD is just something that needs to be handled better and it's a major problem all over the county. And I, I, no matter what area you live in. And I won't disagree with you that sometimes maybe other areas get a quicker response. I, I, I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Can I say? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
In my backyard, off my property line is Hyde Park. When I contact MSD to fix the busted pipes and manholes, they went outside our property line, fixed all the manholes in Hyde Park. So now we see there is a favoritism problem going on in our neighborhood. There's a bias program going on in our neighborhood. And there's a gentrification problem going on in our neighborhood. And we're no different from the people in Hyde Park. You know, they might live better than we do, but they, you don't know what people going through. We might live just as better than them in our small homes, but we want our homes. You know, we want to stay in our homes, you know? And we shouldn't have to be victims and victimized in our own homes by the city, you know?
You, you, are you working with the city too or you, you mean the county?
I mean the county.
Okay, I mean.
Well, I've been to, I done been to the, to the mayor twice. No response. Mika Owens, no response. So the city's not doing anything. Everybody's, everybody keep going to MSD, but MSD is pushing them away and blaming it on other people, the same as stormwater. We get this effect when it rains. So to me, as the city, county, somebody need to come together and not put blame on one another and take care of this neighborhood.
Right, and the city is concerned about MSD too. I, I will have to say that. And we are work, which we're partnering more now than we ever have. That doesn't help you right now. But it is an issue that your issue specifically needs to be dealt with and we're gonna have somebody, Karen and whoever else, administrator, would like to have involved with your specific issue. Because I do want you to come back with some good news.
You told me.
Yeah, and some of the good news was that Karen came out.
Yes.
I would expect her to do that, but I'd like to hear more about that. Jeff, did you have any comments?
Nothing that really hasn't already been said. I know that Karen did go out to the property with Jeff Proctor from our MSD Oversight Team, looked at the property, looked for evidence of sewer overflows, that type of thing. I know that they did meet with city staff and looked at, into the landslide protection program, I think that the city has. I think there's also been some work right now looking at lining some of the sewer assets and some of the sewer pipes in, in this area that contribute to some of the surface flows that they're seeing. But I want to follow up on that and make sure. But I think that was something we'd received in, in around the June timeline of some projects that were going on. But I need to confirm that before I can say with certainty. But we'll, we'll follow up and, and see what is going on right now.
Every time I come down here, MSD do get on the job. However, they flushing so much that they flushing this into our house because we're at the beginning of the pipeline. However, Waterworks is getting on it. They trying to all clear theirselves out of this mess to, so they don't have to be liable for anything. But at the same time, MSD came out, repaired some pipes five, six blocks away from where we live at, they runs to our street. And what they do, bust the oil line. Oil spilt out all over our street.
So we've been, I understand your passion and we let you go on a little bit more.
Thank you.
You're living with it. But what I'd like for us to do, just as administration, I'm sure we will, that we remain, we are consistent with our communication with you and that you don't have to come down, I'm here again. But at least when you come down, you can say, we called you seven times or whatever. So we'll make sure that we have consistent communication with you, okay?
And there is a sinkhole open wide sitting on our street. Four months, no touching, no nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
On Hewitt, okay. Okay. Uh huh, thank you. Gwen Davis?
Good evening. I'm just going to quickly piggyback on what Jean had said. I'm a homeowner and I live right next door to Jean. My concern is the mudslide in my backyard.
Trying to bring your, because they're back there, they can't hear that.
We have mudslides in the backyard and my house is sliding downhill. No one, MSD, they're trying to clean up their mess by flushing the sewers and it's backing up into our homes after they flush it, even if it doesn't rain. No, we do not live in Hyde Park or Mount Adams or Columbia Parkway, but the moment these areas and neighborhoods have mudslides, they are fixed immediately. We're still waiting. And like I said, our houses are sliding downhill. Everyone hears our story, say they're going to help us. But the moment we leave here are the phone calls and no one gets back with us. And like I said, I own like two homes over there. And my concern is my house patio is gone. Everything has slid downhill. And all I'm asking, you know, if we could do something about the mudslide so we won't lose our homes.
Okay, thank you. And all of you are on Hewitt.
Yes, I live right next door.
Okay, very good. And then we have one last public comment. Bonnie Hightower?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here for the same thing. I'm having a little more problems. I'm having the smells come through my house. I can't have company or anything because when you enter my front door, it smells like a poop factory. And I've called MSD, they didn't send people out to check to see what's going on. They said maybe it's some busted pipes in my basement. And I had a plumber come out. I have no busted pipes, but I have this continuing smell. And they know what it is. They give me this purple stuff to pour down in the floor. It's, the smell is gone for a couple days, but it's right back. You know, and that's hard to smell, you know? I've got a sick mom at home. If we have to smell this throughout the day. If you come to my house right now, you can smell it. And for the last four years, it's been bad. That's how long I've been there.
Four years, okay. And so I hear four years and I'm thinking the possibility of smelling all that for four years. So all of you guys are, all of you on Hewitt, so. Yeah. Okay, let's see. Well, I saw Evanston, but I thought she just meant the community Evanston. Okay, okay, well, I hear you. We all hear you. And so we'll work on it and see what we can do and let us know if we did anything. I'm not saying we can solve all the issues, that's for sure, because they've been going on for years. But you said they're aware and they gave you some purple stuff and I don't know what the next solution is. But Karen, as I said, Karen Ball is our liaison and we'll, we'll just see what we can do.
She was gonna have some people come out, but like I said, I haven't seen anybody else out there except when they came and fixed the line with the oil spill.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for coming down this evening and for your comments. She did just beep, yeah. Stay right there. So I, you know, I'm not, I don't know if that's true or not, but I know right now I'm concerned about you guys and how we can help you and give you some peace of mind and not have the smell and all of that. And so, you know, I'm not promising anything. We're not prom, but we'll do all, I can promise we'll do all that we can do to help you. Yeah, so, okay, uh huh, you're welcome. Okay, um, I'm gonna skip over if you guys, unless you have something big, the comments and motions and move forward with the regular agenda, is that okay? Okay. I didn't see Eric come in, so we'll go. Izzy? Eric Beck, engineer, our engineer? Is he out there? Because, because none of them are money issues. Before we get started, thank you all for your patience. He has nothing with money or anything. So why don't we move forward and we'll do the women and girls portion. On our regular agenda, a resolution appointing members to the Hamilton County Commission to Women and Girls and Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. So we have two things happening here. We've got the resolution appointing, officially appointing the, the members, the new members to the Commission on Women and Girls. And then we will welcome them all up individually to the dais and we'll all welcome them to the commission and, and give them a certificate. So before we have them come up, I'd like to pass the resolution so we have that under our belts. So just very briefly, welcome to all of you that are here, especially the new members of the Commission on Women and Girls. This is our fourth cohort going into the Commission on Women and Girls. As this commission knows, because we've approved many of the recommendations, we've worked on things like pay equity, domestic violence, mental health for young people. We have done really important work and really meaningful work and it has paid off in the county. We now have period products for free in our bathrooms, ladies, because of some of the work of the Commission on Women and Girls and we're trying to help that spread into some of the schools in our community. So we, I, I will be offering a resolution to formally induct the new commissions, the women and girls. And then I will read off the names individually as, as you all come up for your certificate. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve of the resolution appointing members to the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so we are gonna call you up by name. We're gonna move to the front of the room here and so when I call your name, just come forward.
Okay. I'm soaking wet now.
Alright, and I'm gonna ask for forgiveness if I mispronounce any of your names. We're just meeting for the first time, so forgive me, but I will do my best. Alright, first we have Val Strunk. Next is Stephanie Rivera. And if you would make. Yes. You were taking pictures. Alright, Kathleen Doris.
But you can stay up here.
Oh yeah, please do, please do, yeah. All right, Jennifer Mooney. All right, Jill Miller.
There we go, right up front.
Centoria McConnell. Gina Marsh.
There we go. That's for you.
Courtney. All right, hold on. Ashaway? Ashaway, that was close, let's close this. Randy Berlou. I should say Dr. Randy Berlou. Awabah. So these are the 10 new women on the Commission on Women and Girls. All right, thank you ladies. Now we're gonna go on to the girls. Evelyn Westrich. Is Evelyn here? All right, don't see Evelyn. Kinsey Sullivan. Here she is. Riley Sutar. Was I close, Riley? Suter. Reagan Rivers. Fatima Naze. Beanie Emrick. Ally Capel. Erin Coleman. Gia Elizabeth. Camille Roman. And these are the new girls from the Commission on Women and Girls. So that's it. I'm sure my colleagues would like to comment, so we're gonna run up to the dais real quick. So I just wanna thank you all for being here. We're looking forward to getting started. We're starting on Saturday with our orientation and a big, huge, humongous shout out to Mary Mauney, who is the new program, well, not so new, but program coordinator. And the steering committee's here and we've got alum here. Thank you so much for joining, really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for the presentation and all the young ladies and the, and the women who are gonna be working with the girls. We need so much more of this, um, during this day and time. We need more positive things for our young women and our, the older women that have taken the time to be a part of this whole process. I thank you so much. And as I was looking at each one coming up, I was telling Denise, I said, I, they just are all so unique, even the, the women, the, the girls are just, and I think about what they're gonna do in the future and it just, I actually had chills up there, you didn't know that, but just to see these young women and doing something positive and the, and the older women. So thank you so much for this program. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to, uh, also commend Commissioner Drehouse for bringing this Women and Girls idea to the Hamilton County Commission. Several years ago, I don't know how many years is it now, is it four, five?
This is our fourth time, yeah.
Four years. And I just wanna say what I love about this, uh, five years, that's what I thought. Commissioner Drehouse. Five.
All right, we're, we're gonna check the record on this.
I think, I think I put my money with Jennifer. But, um, what I love about this, uh, Commission of Women and Girls is not just a commission and a certificate. Uh, there's a lot of work, important work and ideas that you bring forward that have become policy. So, uh, you've made a major impact in Hamilton County with various policies. Equal Pay, we just had a big event down at the library and several companies because of the Commission on Women and Girls and your recommendations, companies said, we're gonna come forward and make sure there's equal pay for women. That's huge. A lot of people talk about equal pay. Uh, we have now put something forward because of our Women and Girls Commission. So looking forward to more, uh, work. I know you've done other things, but I just want, uh, to you all to know, a lot of times people have commissions and they say, oh, I just sit on here, we're not doing anything. Your thoughts, your, uh, work, uh, turns into action and turns into policy. So again, congratulations, look forward to the new group and what you have in store for us as we continue to make the world more equal. Thank you.
And you, you feel the power in this room. You guys just don't know the power. I mean, I guess you know, but I feel the power in this room. So go forth and conquer and whatever this board can do to help. Uh, of course, I know Commissioner Drehouse will be leading with her team, but whatever we can do as a board, so just go forth and conquer. Okay, see you guys, ladies. Wow, that's, okay, now we get. Yeah, yeah, I see. Oh, there you are. This is my bad eye. No, he can't, you know, no, he wasn't. Okay, but we have, uh, engineer, uh, um, items to come up. He came in right when we started with them. Yeah, they went looking for him, couldn't find him, so, hi.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Good to see you again.
Yes, good to see you also.
We have three items today. Item number two is a resolution approving the county engineer to fulfill its 2022 commitment to the townships. This is the, uh, funds that come from the 20% of the county's 70% portion of the license plate fees. Uh, we have five projects this year, one in Colrain Township, one in Green, one in Harrison, one in Springfield, one in Sycamore, totaling $298,690.
So you combined them or, so item number?
No, they're separately, they, they, these monies go to each township. Colrain Township is 80,000, Green Township is 41, Harrison Township is 22,000, Springfield is 71,730 and Sycamore Township is 83,350 for a total of $298,690.
Thank you so much. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumis, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Drehouse.
Item number three is a resolution, uh, for an intergovernmental agreement with Sims Township for the installation of a flashing pedestrian signal on Hope Wall Road, Humphrey Road and Union Cemetery Road. Township requested these and did a traffic study showing that they were warranted. The township will be responsible for paying all costs involved with the design, installation, operation, maintenance and repair. So allow them to install them along county roads.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item three.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumis, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you.
Item number four is a resolution approving the 2022 municipal road funds. Um, as you may recall, we held a public hearing back on Thursday, June 16th. Um, this is the, uh, resolution approving the projects that were presented at that time. I'd be glad to list those if you'd like.
I don't need to know.
Okay.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumis, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we can, uh, move forward. We have, uh, comments and motions by the commissioners and also Jeff Alito has a by leave. So I'll move forward to see, uh, it's, I'm, I'm gonna digress. I'm not gonna do anything today to relate to my comments, but, uh, Vice President Reese, did you have any comments?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. I do, uh, wanted to, um, say that I had a chance to, uh, speak at the, uh, Greater Cincinnati Regional Chamber on Thursday for their coffee roundtable. And, uh, it was a great event. I wanna, uh, again congratulate Brendan Cole in his new position as president. And, uh, it was just a great event for, uh, for me to get a chance to share all the great things we're doing here, uh, in, uh, Hamilton County. And so I just wanted to highlight that, uh, next I do have a by leave. I don't know if it's, that I'd like to, um, submit for, uh, for hiring my office. Okay, I'd like to, uh, submit by leave number two. And, uh, by leave number two, it is for my office to be able to, uh, hire Veda Stevens II to, uh, be in my office and work in my office. Uh, we have a vacancy and certainly want to, uh, have him. I wanna highlight a few things. Veda graduated from Miami University, Oxford. He's very proud of that. Graduated cum laude, uh, has done extensive, uh, internships. Uh, most recently interned with, uh, United States Representative, Congresswoman and Chairwoman of the Congressional Black Caucus, Joyce Beatty. Uh, he's also worked in the United States Senate side. He's, uh, been very active as a student, student body director for diversity and inclusion. And, uh, he is a, a President Joe Biden fellow and, uh, so he has quite a bit of experience and excited to have him join our office, uh, along to join, um, Quentin Monroe, who in his day was SGA president of Central State and was also, uh, an intern at the, uh, White House for Obama for HBCU. So I just think it'd be a great combination, uh, to have him join us. He's also been, uh, Mr. Stevens also has been on the dean's list, et cetera, et cetera. It's just been an incredible resume. So we'd like to, uh, have this passed and, uh, be able to hopefully welcome him, uh, to our Hamilton County staff as we are always out recruiting the best and the brightest to join our county.
Okay, well, thank you. And I, it's only been what, a week since she, her vacancy was open? You don't want any grass to grow under your feet because it's plenty of work to do.
That's a lot of work.
Just welcome, welcome to the county where it's thrilled to be working with you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass the by leave, to adopt by leave number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just have a couple of things real quick. Uh, once again, I wanna thank Mary Mauney, uh, who put all this together for the Commission of Women and Girls. She has really elevated the work dramatically. Um, so thank you, thank you to Mary. I don't know if she's within earshot, but really appreciate the, 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 uh, work she's doing. We did have the One Ohio statewide meeting and the One Ohio regional meeting, uh, yesterday. And so I just wanted to report that, um, the move, the, um, local group is really doing important work to try to understand what kind of recommendations we wanna make from Hamilton County to that statewide board for the funding that's coming through the settlement. And so just tremendous roundtables, smart discussions, um, so that work is, is going well forward. Uh, and also to piggyback on that, Senator Portman, uh, was at the Pricele Library today. He asked that HCARC, uh, put together a roundtable to talk about the addiction issues in this community and how we are partnering with the federal government, particularly through funding, uh, for things like the QRT and the African-American Engagement Work Group and other things that are priorities of HCARC. And so we had a, a really important, I think, discussion with him this morning and I wanna thank him for his service. I know he's, um, he's not running again for office and so he's retiring, uh, but he's really been an important champion for the work that HCARC has done at the federal level. And then, um, I went to an event, I represented the commission actually. We, um, offered a resolution or proclamation at the Hamilton County Youth Employment Program today. We all three signed it. I offered on our behalf. JFS has this great partnership with Michael Beck and Talbert House and others to find, um, employment for youth in the community, particularly related to STEM. So there was a lot of robotics, uh, web development, a lot of things I don't really understand very well, uh, but web design, uh, videos, uh, Michael was there, Michael Patton. So, uh, I just wanted to say that what a great job they're doing and I offered a proclamation celebrating their work from the county commission. And the Madam Chair, I assume you're gonna talk about the Hamilton County Fair.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, yes, so, thank you. Um, earlier this afternoon about 4:30, um, Commissioner Drehouse and I went to, um, the Hamilton County Fair that opened today and it was 167 years of existence. So, uh, they were very proud, it's very active, people were just coming in and out. So, uh, it's all weekend. If you wanna go there, it would be great to do that, so. Um, and I wanted to thank you for filling in for me for the One Ohio local meeting here. I, I lost my car keys and couldn't get down here, but I thank you for that and, uh, filling in because that, as you were saying, extremely important. Uh, all the money that's coming down for drug services and programming and treatment, we have to do it right. And so we're far ahead of the curve, our group is, I think, down here in Hamilton County. So, thank you. Um, Jeff Alito.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just two quick comments. I wanna thank the county facility staff that are doing their best to, uh, get the sixth floor, um, back up to where we all want it to be, uh, ultimately with, uh, new carpeting and also helping out with making sure that the, the meetings we have at night, uh, take place and that the, uh, the air conditioning is working and everything to make it a, a comfortable environment for everyone. So I wanna thank county facilities. Also, uh, wanted to thank, um, one of our 911 operators, um, James Hembray, who took a call, uh, out in, in the Anderson Township area, um, back in, I think it was, maybe it may have been late June and helped, um, make sure that someone who was not breathing was, uh, able to, so the person that was there helping them, uh, provide CPR appropriately and made sure that that, that life was ultimately saved. I know James was out of the Anderson Township Fire Department recently getting some, uh, congratulations along with the people, the survivors of that incident, et cetera, uh, to make sure that, uh, that, uh, everyone involved had a chance to talk about the incident after it happened in a positive way. So I wanna, wanna thank and congratulate, uh, congratulate James. And, uh, finally, um, in addition to that, commissioners, uh, there is one other by leave on the agenda. I believe Commissioner Drehouse was going to, um, initiate that by leave, but that would conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So I'll, I'll move forward with that, this res. So this is a resolution that we discussed at the Tuesday meeting. We had a presentation from a number of individuals. But there was a group represented the Power a Clean Future Ohio group. And so, um, as promised, the resolution is on the calendar today. And just as a reminder, there's one whereas clause, I think, that really spells out what we're doing here. And it's whereas in 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved Hamilton County as a member of the Cincinnati 2030 district. Participating members made a commitment to reduce buildings' energy use, water consumption and emissions by 50% before 2030 for county facilities manage buildings within the boundaries of the 2030 district. And so this gives us the opportunity to join this organization to pull down federal dollars that are now becoming available for this energy efficiency work that we're all interested in moving forward with. And they also provide free technical assistance for the county. And as you can see, many other counties have joined the cohort. And so I'm offering the resolution for Hamilton County to become a member of the Join Power a Clean Ohio's Future Communities. And that's what the resolution does. Future Communities, and that's what the resolution does.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Yep.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Any discussion? I can say it after. Well, I just wanted to say I do support this resolution, but I also want to make sure that the presentation that was made by the county administrative groups that talked about what Hamilton County is doing with our buildings, I think we won the first to have solar on, on the buildings. I think it's great that we could join this coalition, but I want to be very clear from what I heard, we have been a leader. We've heard our environmental services come in and said, let me tell you what we have done, and let me tell you what's new. We did, we're all, we're all the way down to even food. We've been helping with the food and preservation with the food. So while I know that there's some other counties that we, we list in here and I respect them, but I want to be clear that from what I heard from the presentation, that, I want to thank you, Madam President, having them come and do the presentation. Maybe the presentation wasn't as polished because we like, you know, the presenter was getting in the weeds of things, but when you looked at our presentations, we had meat on the bones. So I appreciate, a lot of times people got a fancy name and they come up with fancy things, but I, I don't mind joining this, but I want to recognize, I want our taxpayers to know that we have been a leader. When you look at how much money we've been saving taxpayers with all of the innovative things we've done with our buildings, what we're going to do, trying to work with the Coalition of the Ohio County Organization of County Commissioners that brings solar on a larger level to buy power together, bringing down the cost of energy in two stadiums, a Major League Baseball stadium and a football NFL stadium. I just want to thank our staff, and Jeff can give them by name, because all the names escape me, but I want to say that their presentations show that we already was out front, and I appreciate that the cities and everything are starting to do this. We can join, but I think they can learn from some stuff that we have done. We've been getting awards, we've been award winning, and I don't want that to be forgotten. I know that's not the intention, but even the gentleman that presented from Power, A Clean Future Ohio, he was even, I saw him, he was even stunned. Wow, I mean, you done done this, you done done that, you done done this. So I, I think the, the advantage for us joining is, Commissioner Drehouse has indicated, is that we can get some more money to do it, to do the things we've been doing. But I want to give a pat on the back to our administration because we have been ahead of the game. We, we don't do a good job of marketing, we don't do a good job of advertising, we don't do a good job of putting an umbrella on it, but those things are going to be, those things are going to change as Bridget is working to bring everybody under one umbrella for marketing. But I just want to make sure that people know that we have been out front on these issues, and we're going to do a more aggressive job of getting out there and letting people know this. So this is great, now we can get some money for the work we've been doing on our own, and I want to thank Mr. Drehouse for bringing this to us, President Dumas for allowing us to have those presentations, so we really understand all that has been done and a plan that we already have in place to move forward, to make sure the environment is safe and people, the taxpayers are saving money. So thank you.
Thank you, but I, I'm getting credit where I don't think credit is due. Well, it's okay, we did deal with the clean air and everything as far as inviting the facilities, Commissioner Drehouse did invite them, but.
And really Chris Harding, you know, really helped organize all this. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Great job.
Chris has been working on this for a few months.
Very hard, so, okay. So we have a motion on the table. I, you want to, you made it. And I second this.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. Okay, we have consent agenda items, quite a few of them. I'm not going to go through all of them, items five through 24. And under administration, we have an agreement with Hughes and Sons Plumbing for Emergency Plumbing Services. I can't see that. Is that 1.5? Yeah. That's bigger. Yeah. Okay, um, oh, it is, okay. So we have an agreement with the plumbing service through administration, and we, why, why do I keep going back to mine? I don't want to use yours, like, I don't need these big. And I wanted to talk about JFS and all the services that we are, I'm going to use this one of those things. JFS is allocating residential services once again. I also see in the developmental disability services for $740,000. And that's not through JFS, but this through administration. And then human resources, a resolution authorized an accounting administrator to execute the purchase of the sports stadia liability insurance program. I see Frank Surtaro is here, if anybody has any questions. So as I said earlier, we continue to spend money on youth and making sure they get the services that they need through JFS, and there's several on residential, as I said earlier, youth employment is here. And also I'm looking down further, SWARWIP, which is Southwest Ohio Workforce Investment Program. Their board is, we're going to be working with them through JFS for 3 million for workforce development, so necessary in this day and time. We're training people and hopefully people will come forward and be a part of learning some skills. And then Easter Seals for peer mentoring and supportive services under the Benefit Bridge Program, 1.1 million. And then we have sheriff is asking once again for applications for liquor license. It's only two this time, so maybe they're slowing down, I'm not sure, but I will open it up, Vice President Reese, if you had any comments on the consent.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to follow back up on the part of, of JFS and a lot of residential things that we are passing every week, and I wanted to ask the administrator, or maybe the director, there was an issue about, we pass things, but then the people aren't getting, the companies were not getting paid. The foster and halfway houses, I guess, is that what you call them, group homes, several of them, we passed the money, we thought they'd been paid, they had not been paid in over four months. I understand we were working on that, I just want to make sure, because as we're keep passing money, and we are going to bed thinking it's already been handled. I'd like to know, Jeff or Director Patton, if the people have been paid.
Yeah, there has been some progress on that, commissioners, so Director Patton can speak directly.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Good question. We put that plan into action last week. We understood that there were some vendors that we were working with that had not been paid for a few months, and so we made the decision to pay those invoices without the typical process of reviewing those for reconciliation upfront. And so my understanding as of Friday, the vendors that we, that were the most delinquent were paid through the auditor's office, and they should have been expecting a payment earlier this week. So we are making, continuing to make progress on that. We made really significant progress in a short amount of time, and we're going to reconcile those invoices on the back end this time, and we're going to continue to do that until we get to a point where that backlog is resolved. So that has been resolved, and the vast majority of those folks, my understanding, would have gotten a direct deposit or a check earlier this week.
Thank you. Could you get something to us so we're not out in the street and somebody stopping us and they never got paid?
I'm sorry.
In terms of when it's completed, that everybody who, you know, we want everybody to cross the Ts, dot dots.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But four months, we all agree, it's a long time.
Absolutely.
And I know you said some of these people got paid, but I want to make sure, when do we, when do we catch up, and then when do we get back to the system where we can pass the money? You can handle whatever the paperwork is supposed to be, or either.
On the front end.
Don't give it to us till you get the paperwork, and then we're back on a system of people getting paid on time, because obviously they were getting paid on time, I guess, before.
Prior to that, prior to that, they were. We had some staffing issues that I think folks have experienced as well, so we're working on getting that corrected. We have some management resources that we redirected to that work, so we can get that back on track in the manner in which it's intended to be worked. And so we're continuing to work on those backlogs now to get people paid that have been delinquent. The new allocations that you get on your, your agenda today, my expectation is that those items are going to be handled in the, in the most appropriate way, which is our typical process for reconciliation as we get those invoices upfront, reviewing them to make sure that those costs are accurate and that we're paying those invoices based on our upfront review of them before, before we actually cut the check. But in this particular instance, it was an emergency situation, and we knew that, so we, we needed to make some quick modifications to that process to make sure that people were paid. So we're getting to a point where I think we're going to be close to ending the backlog of folks that had major delinquencies, and we will be back on track probably in the next couple of weeks with our, with our standard process.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, because these are small businesses, and so I appreciate you getting on that, and I know we don't put these things on here, so we have to depend on your office, because you put them on here.
Correct.
And I just want to make. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I'm glad we're getting a new thing. Don't put them on here, and we ain't ready to pay them, because I don't want people, I'm thinking, we voted for this, and they're like, but we ain't get no money. So I appreciate you getting on top of that and putting some new processes in place.
Thank you, thanks.
And I, I just thank you that when issues come up, Director Patton, how you jump on those things, and you're honest, and I'm speaking for myself, you're honest about your ability to solve the issues and how quickly you can do it, and you listen to us, and you don't just stand up here and listen, but you do the thing, and so I appreciate that from you, certainly.
Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Drehouse?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I had a quick question about item 24, Jeff. I see the coroner or someone is going to Lake Tahoe, California, and I'm, I imagine it's a conference, and I just wonder, do you know what conference it is, and is it?
I don't specifically know. Clerk Kirby probably has the specific information on the travel request.
It's Association of Forensic Quality Assurance Manager Conference. Annual quality training.
Definitely.
Thank you, and it's only one employee.
That's correct. No other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items five through 24.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
With no further business to come before the board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes, thank you.